Call of February 12th Dixon County Commission Meeting to order. Please stand with flag salute.
February 5th.
February 5th.
Do that.
February 12th. February 12th. February 5th.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have we looked at the agenda? Motion to approve it with no additions to it?
So moved.
No, we have two additions.
Oh. I said it with no additions to it, Barb. But the two additions is printed on our sheet. Lynn still second it?
Yes, with the two additions on the agenda to amend it.
Oh, you may, I'll second it. All of, any other discussion? All of the favors say aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. Consent agenda, minutes of the January 29th work session and regular meeting. Fund expenditures, $110,000, $128.15. Abatements of $29,204.14. Added tax of $34.54. And wire payments of $117,627.33.
If we approve the consent agenda?
Second it. Any other discussion? All those favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Laverne, you want to make your comments?
Yes, we've all attended the county government day down to Piki yesterday afternoon. And we did get to visit with our representative, John Barker, and some of the, some of the issues that they are dealing with at the state house right now. Of course, the budget's the main one that they're dealing with, but they have some other bills that looks like, hopefully, if they could relax some of the regulations that we deal with would be helpful. So it was a little disappointing, I guess. The weather kind of made for a smaller crowd, but at least we were able to go down for that. And I guess I look forward to next week of going over the Harrington Chamber banquet at Harrington on the ninth.
Lynn?
Okay, I just have a couple of things. I plan to attend the Salina Chamber meeting this evening. Solomon State Bank happens to have an office or one of their banks over there, branches at Salina, and they're a member. So they've invited me to, as one of their guests for their table over there. Also, I plan on attending the listening tour on behalf of Fort Riley where they're trying to generate public comments, but also support for Fort Riley. And that's going to be next Monday. And then also later that evening, the Harrington Chamber. And that's all I have for right now.
At our work session, Leah came in, Hearn, our treasurer, to answer some questions about tax abatements, how they're handled, procedure that's followed to that. John Goff and Martin Tannehill came in to discuss our bridges that are going to be coming up for hearing to close. And then there was also some information on the update on the 3465 Sage Bridge. It's due to be replaced. And then Dick Plummer came up and gave an update on the IP work this morning. That's all. Like I said, we all did the same case meeting yesterday. Presentation of, well, we have to wait until 11:15 for the hearing on the tax abatement. So you want to go ahead and go Brad?
Sure. She'd like to burn some time. We cut through my list here pretty good. A lot of what we talked about, we talked about T U A banquets, the Inter Avenue Bridge, we need guard rail put on that. Martin briefed you on that already. And the Sage Road project, you've been briefed on that, all the good news.
The update on the guard rail out here, I was signing the staff. What was that?
Well, that 800 Avenue Bridge, just west of Eden, it's a, it's a concrete structure. And it's got pretty thick sidewalls to it to stick out. As Laverne brought to attention, they, it's got kind of a hazard if somebody were to hit that. So the guys are going to, we've got quite a bit of used guard rail. We're going to put guard rail up to the bridge on both sides. And on, I assume it's the west side, Laverne can confirm that, there's a driveway entrance that, to the land to it, that they're going to have to move over just a little bit to be able to get guard rail there. So, but they'll get out there with weather permitting and get that done. And then, we're obviously, since we took that bridge off of our grant application to replace because it wasn't funded on the off route system, it'll be there for a while probably. So we'll make it a little bit safer. We won't have much expense involved in it. Your pink tab is your today's staffing reports. Not a lot of changes there, and it does reflect the new hire we've got for the custodia that we added, first of January. And as I said, Anna's doing an outstanding job. Everything's working out really well so far. And we've had really good reports back on her performance. And we started out raising the bar pretty high and set the standard high, and it's working out to our advantage, I think. And then Sheriff's Department had one resignation termination in the jail. So, other than that, during the month of January, that's all we've had, so.
Did we ever get that correction officer hired that we've allowed here to hire?
I'm not sure whether he has or not. He gets hired a couple.
Okay. And we're going to add another staff member up there.
Yeah, I don't know whether he's added the additional. I think he's just trying to keep his head under water on the sales quo. So, but I don't believe he's got to the point of the additional person yet. So, and not because we haven't allowed him, just because it hasn't, he hasn't gotten here to be able to do that yet, so. Janelle also provided us a year-to-date cash balance report. Of course, it's a little bit early to really tell anything. As you're well aware, the front, front end of the year is very heavy with contractual expenditures. Probably one thing to note there is the month of January, we had a pretty good month for sales tax. It was actually up by, from the same time period last year, by about $10,000 or so. And that's good. Hopefully, that'll maintain, so.
We have to sign some of that stuff, Laverne?
Oh, some of that.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I thought it was just the tax abatements.
The city county lunch that we were talking about with March 11th, work for you guys
okay, Lynn?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. I've sent that over to David to see if that'll work for the city. And I thought we'd just have something at the farmhouse and the back room.
Sounds good.
And let each agency take care of their own. And that'd give us the opportunity, we can have that for as long as we need it that day and have some privacy, so. Did you want to, as far as department heads attend, or are you just looking for the elected officials and administrators, or what's your thoughts? I know we've done it both ways in the past. Sometimes we'll have department managers attend and talk about some of the stuff that's going on.
Do we need all the department heads, or do you think there's just a, I know Martin and Lon Strater work pretty close and, you know, kind of have some partnership type things on that. I think it'd be good to have some of the department heads and maybe the economic development piece. I don't know if we would need everyone.
Yeah, if we want to get too involved, I mean, it's more communication. It's kind of like with City Enterprise. I mean, that's, you know, the thing with that, you know, that's going to be too close into it. I don't, when we get back to you, we'll kind of see if there's a couple that we'd want to, you know.
If there's some, like, any development.
Well, I'm thinking more GIS, you know, for sure.
I mean, you know, this is available, you know, that'd be, you know, something that's kind of generic rather than getting orange, you know, specific.
All right. We'll be doing it right before the election. There'll be some turnover there, but at least we get commitment from the people who have participated in it for the last four years, so.
Yeah, I want to, Lynn, Laverne, think of something, you know, if we want to.
Something comes up, we can, we don't have to know numbers until that day.
Right, right.
Well, I guess the other part would be if we would go ahead and develop a little more of a discussion agenda. So if we did want to have a specific department head for that.
Target some area that we want to, you know.
Yeah. And so, you know, that might be a good approach to use. I wonder about the economic development piece, though, since the city kind of has the thing they're rolling out, and we have some things that we're wanting. I think it'd be helpful to have Janelle.
That topic should be discussed, probably.
But maybe have Janelle there and Mike, or at least some representation to.
We're going to have a Janelle put together as we get closer to that time. That kind of dictates who we have to tend.
Yeah, we don't want to drag it on for too long, get too much involved, yeah.
All right. Some time ago, it's my recollection that you had an opening on the Central Kansas Medical Health Board. Did Bill Peterson step in?
We did, but the only thing is we had changed our bylaws, and we do not have as many representatives. Some of the counties just had one person. And since Dixon County, Salina, had the largest representation, they reduced our number by one.
Okay.
And.
So our sponsor, we just have to, Jonay Crowe upstairs that offered to serve in that capacity if we had an opening. She's got a background in mental health and, and.
You say who was that?
Jonay Crowe. She works up in the Corps Services. And so she said, didn't know when we had an opening, but she said that she would be willing to serve if we did, so.
And Sheila has been, she's chair for another year. And, you know, so she, she had kind of made the statement she may not, you know, just stay on, on and on and on. But, but I don't want to cut that experience short either, so.
Sure.
So it may be just something to have her name there.
Yeah, I'll have Jonay tell her, or I'll tell her just to kind of stand by, and when opening occurs, we'd sure like to utilize her expertise.
Okay.
So. And then we, we got the notice from Salina County, and I talked to Rita Dyster yesterday, I think it was, that they finally got their, our regional county commission meeting set up for March 3rd at 6:30. Got their health department in Salina, now the current stronghold of all of Salina. We can go attend that.
What day is that?
March 3rd.
March 3rd.
Which I believe is a Tuesday, so.
Okay.
And then if your packet's under the blue tab, you've got a copy of the enterprise, proposed enterprise police contract. The city enterprise had a meeting under this week and chose to request the sheriff contract on law enforcement services, similar to Solomon. And Garrett has provided a copy of a contract for you to review. If you approve that, then he'll take it back. And the city commission has a, and enterprise has another meeting next week, and they'll finalize it. And I believe he has the, the 11th is the starting date on that, which would be the night of that meeting next week. I think for all practical purposes, the sheriff's department is covering enterprise at this time for law enforcement as well, so. And I think he's probably answered the rest of your questions, or last week when you talked, but.
Were you going to officially give him approval to, to hire?
Well, he probably should, you know, we haven't, but he's got one person I know right now from the last round of interviews that he thinks he could go ahead and hire without advertising. And then he would like to, he needs a second one as one, as time allows. So, well, of course, you know, in the future, he'd like to do three, like he told you that he'd like to get at least, he like, he needs one right now to be able to do the minimum. He'd like to do a second one as time allows, so.
Correct me if I'm wrong, though, we have to, I mean, we're under the freeze yet, that we have to make a motion to allow him to hire additional person?
Well.
You know.
You know, the elected officials are a little different because they can do within their budget. However, since this is a contractual arrangement, I think he'd be approving it as part of the contractual arrangement with that.
Can't go wrong by approving it.
Yeah.
Well, I think we should.
Well, maybe.
Maybe have a motion that, that we.
Well, that way, some days, if the contract decides, they decide that they don't want to do something, it's in the record that you hired a person specifically for that contract. And they want to look at reducing or doing something and.
Well, I mean, I was thinking that, you know, we haven't lifted hiring freeze, so to speak, have we?
No.
Yeah, I mean, okay.
Now, we.
Well, I think we should.
We need approval on anything except for the essential services, so.
Right, yeah.
But if there were any questions on the contract, I'd answer that if we do, if we want to get to it.
Okay, yeah. Well, we're at 11:15. Called public hearing for tax exemption application for Abilene Machine hearing.
I can kind of preempt it a little bit with, weeks ago, I guess it's been, you received the application for Abilene Machine. They're requesting a tax, a tenure tax exemption on the addition to their warehouse. Their ware, the main warehouse that was put in in, I believe, 2006, was, was on exemption that goes off this year, same type of economic development exemption. This is an addition that is, that fulfills the commitments of the, of our policy and resolution and the statute that says that they will, it'll increase jobs and they conduct the, one of the three specified functions that are required as far as commerce. They made that application, you accepted it. It has been advertised or publicized, and we've notified the other tax entities. I assume with no response was, so. And at this point.
Had they made that request previously? Well, they're just dealing with this, with the county on this, they're not dealing this with any other.
No, they would be dealing also with the township and the school district.
Oh, they would be, yeah.
They would, they'd be exempt from property taxes, all of, all of property taxes. And we haven't heard from either one of those, so I'm assuming reasonably sure that there's no objection on their part, so. This would allow them to have 100% abatement the first year, and then incrementally by 10% each year, and be back on the complete tax rolls by the 10th year, same as the past one. Certainly a good project, a good incentive to add businesses, promote businesses and create the extra tax base.
Yeah, I have a copy of the resolution that was in 98 year for Abilene Machine. So, tenure 98. I'll make the motion that we approve resolution number 020515, resolution of attempt to exempt from added law and tax certain property owned by Abilene Machine Incorporated located at 421 Old 40 Highway, Solomon Dixon County, Kansas, 678, 67480.
Second.
And move it to second. Any other discussion?
I guess, unless there's any other public comment.
Close the public hearing.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yeah.
James, do you want to talk?
Yeah, you, yeah, I'm sorry.
Well, let me, I'll just.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Let me give you maybe an update on what's going on in Abilene Machine the last two years and kind of what's precipitated this, this addition. We've had a growth cycle the last two years. We built a new facility in Sioux Falls, South Dakota, and that's a warehouse and, and distribution space as well as retail space. And then also, some of our sales in South Carolina, our South Carolina plan have been pretty good. So what's happened is we've, we've created a, a catalog department and added a few positions for that, which this addition included some office space that was built into our warehouse, which then we shifted that space to the new addition, which is 75 by 150, to handle most of our receiving. So we've gone through a growth spurt, and it seems like every year we've added two or three positions, you know, sporadically for the last 10 years. And certainly since the fire, our shift has gone more towards the new parts, you know, with the building, the new building anyway. So that continues to be a big growth area for us. This is just, you know, one more, one more step in our, our growth.
And all procedures are, move the pledge hearing be closed, and I still make motion to resolution 020515.
Second.
Move to second. Any other discussion? All those favors say aye?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Well, and be sure and convey to them that we're very appreciative of what they're doing out there, and they, you know, they're adding to our economic base, but it's, it's always nice to have some good news out there, that there are some businesses that are moving forward and doing well and, and reinvesting into their business. So I'm very pleased with the growth that they're, they're having, and glad that we have this opportunity to help them.
I'm going to send that all down, right there.
We're about 1.8, give or take.
I was thinking 1.30 stuck in my mind for some reason.
We predicted that, well, we've, we've shown at least the first year, four new positions due to this. We've kind of scaled that back. We're being very conservative.
Was it just this one block?
Yeah, I think that's all I saw. Barbara probably finds something else right in time. I did pass, I did pass that one down, that missed in the barbs.
Yeah, it's, I got it.
Okay.
Are you helping with some other things, James, or is it just more of this particular piece, or?
What's that?
Are you helping Solomon Machine in other capacities, or is it more of this particular piece?
Yeah, right now, I've, I'm kind of their risk manager. It was a full-time job, but I got things to where it's part-time now. But it deals with the, the insurance side, the OSHA-related things, the KPH, anything regulatory. And so that's kind of what I'm here for there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Great.
But we appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. You weren't done, were you, Brad?
Oh, let's see, was I, no, yeah, pretty much. The enterprise contract was, was the last thing I had, and if you had any questions on that, when.
Yeah, we were talking about hiring and stuff like that, and make, make motion to do that, I think.
Yeah.
Do that. Notice of unit commissions, got quite a little bit here. Each one's got a deal from the university, a research and extension. Sent us a folder or a hard copy of kind of what their.
Purple print?
Yep. Imagine that. Kind of what we're doing, water, health, developing Mars leaders and stuff. Also got a letter from Harrington High School after prom. Humanly confirmed, we invite and ask you for participation as a sponsor of the Harrington High School 26th Annual After Prom Party, which will immediately follow the junior, senior prom. I think we have the drug and alcohol, or the.
We donate $500 to each school, each of the five schools once a week, or perhaps. So far, we've donated to Solomon and to Abilene, so.
I'll like that, I'm going to add to the barbs.
Roger.
Did get an invitation that Brad mentioned earlier, from Rita Dexter, Dexter, from Salina. You're invited to a regional county communications informal sharing meeting, March 3rd, 2015, and it's going to be at the Clint County Health Department Building, the east side of the city county building. The meal will be served. We need to R S B P by the 24th. I'll, yeah, I'll just go do it, because I'll be gone the 24th, Barb, if you want to, or Brad, I'll be attending.
Yeah, I'll attend.
I plan to attend.
Send that down.
And I assume they sent this to the other.
I got that.
McPherson County, Morris County, Clay County, our director, Randall Allen, and Marion and Gary.
Yeah, she got a mail in that was from this.
I gave you a copy, right?
Uh, we have had Ottawa County before, too.
They're on that.
Yeah.
I maybe just missed that one.
All right.
And we got a budget of our county, county commission. This is what, what the, part of our budget is out there on page and down. Just the county commission budget. Got a postcard from the U.S. Bureau of Land Management. They're moving their offices from, in Oklahoma. Also, I don't know, we got a deal for more central regional planning. I don't know if you had one of those years deals, a little newsletter. I spelled my name wrong, L I I N. And we also have a letter from White Tail Properties Real Estate, thinking of selling a piece of land. That's your buddy's summary from our deal. Got a letter from the Kansas Environmental, Department of Environmental Services. Public notice, KSAG 15020, notice for, public notice regarding proposed water pollution control permits for agricultural and related waste and authorization. This would be for several in the county. The one here in Dixon County is Mike T. Wilson at 49, 419,000 Avenue. I don't think there's anybody else here in Dixon County. And then we've got a notice from C D, C P, G P D group. This is notice of proposed PTC tower construction, Unit Civic Railroad Company in Dixon County. Congress passed a Rail Safety Improvement Act in 2008, mandates installation of positive train controls, wave cycles, infrastructure along all passing, jury and hazardous transportation rail lines. This letter is intended to inform and invite comments from local government officials regarding the proposed undertaking. And a, this is a loan agreement, Lani, here's the chairman, between Dix County and the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, was entered into effectively 90, December 9th, 98. The loan agreement was subsequently amended effective April 28, 2005. This letter is to inform you that the 31st payment, repayment owed on March 1st, 2005. Please remit the $8,568 to Kansas, 35 cents to the Kansas Department of Health and Environment later than March 1st. Introduction of considered resolutions, which we do have one resolution. There'll be numbers.
Three of them.
Three of them, I'm sorry.
They were, they give you one that gets it.
Yeah, three resolutions. This is a two-story wooden framed house located at 205 First Street, carrying its surplus. The other property would be 203 East First Street, carrying its surplus. And the 020515A, sort of office furniture, include two desks and four chairs. A motion to approve these resolutions, or we need to do them individually?
You do all three numbers?
Might give all three numbers.
Yeah.
Same motion.
Okay, I'll do that then. Resolution 05, 020515C, resolution number 020515B, and 020515A. Make motion we adopt these resolutions.
I'll second it.
And move it to second. Any other discussion? If not, oh, go ahead.
Well, on the houses, we do plan on setting up sometime when people could visit those houses and, and gives a bid of, sealed. We're going to do that like sealed bids that they would, would give, there's a sealed bid on whatever they wanted to take out of the house.
Yeah, we, that's what I would anticipate. We'd do a sealed bid, set a deadline, receive those in the meeting, and then give them a certain time period, whoever we choose to award that bid to. If we have someone, they'd have a certain window of opportunity. award that bid to. If we have someone, they'd have a certain window of opportunity where they, once they sign away their liability, that they could go in, run 30 or 60 days and remove as much as they want to. Or if they want to take the whole house, that'd be better yet.
Yeah.
But we'll probably give it a couple weeks here for the resolutions to go, and then we'll put together the advertisement.
Yeah.
Give it out.
Yeah, and speaking of that, too, you know, make sure that they, a deposit is refundable. You know, just, I guess, I don't know if that's appropriate or not, but, you know, if we went to this much trouble, are they going to do it? I mean, I don't know what you'd want to put on it, but, you know, if you... Is that correct, Doug? I mean, what do you think about...
I don't know. So you've had to do that in the past. Have you required a down payment?
Well, no, this is just a refundable deposit if, you know, I mean...
But for what?
For a reason.
Well, if they don't do something that they're supposed to do, you know, when...
If they're the successful bidder.
Right, yeah. If they're a successful bidder and, and, you know, they go in and leave it worse than it was, it's hard to manage.
I don't know how that can happen.
I'm not sure how that could happen.
If they did nothing, it, you know, it wouldn't matter to us, I guess, so we're just going to go track over and remove the house.
I guess my only concern is if they start throwing stuff out of the house and just leaving it out in the yard, you know, and not cleaning it up.
We could put that in the green.
That would be my consideration on that, would be. We don't want them to just...
You know, if they tear something out that they were going to take and they leave it there.
Yeah, if they leave a lot of stuff laying around outside the house.
If they tear it inside the house, it's not going to make any difference, but it looks like public nuisance.
I would think if you had the successful bidder pay the money and had 30, 60 days to get it out.
Yeah, that's true.
And if they didn't get it out within that timeframe, then they've lost the money.
Yeah, for what they bid, yeah. Oh, yes, okay.
And I wonder if it should be less than that 60 days. I mean, of course, the problem you run into right now, we could have some snowstorms and things like that. But, you know, I think keep the window fairly tight on it, so. But really, I guess, whatever you'd recommend.
Well, whatever timeframe you want, 30 days. I'd just use 60 because that's what I heard. But it doesn't matter, whatever number of days you set.
Yeah, and it depends on the extent that they're going to do. But it, you know, realistically, they could do it in 35, 40 days, you'd think.
Unless somebody, I mean, if they, we want to tear the whole down, house, they got salvage and lumber, and we want 90 days, we could certainly work with somebody to do that and say, let's have them raise the house, you know. But...
Then, going back to that, then, when we're doing that, do they have to get a permit through the city to do that, or not?
There's no permit required to the city. The city just wants, we have to get a permit to raise the house. Basically, all that does is make sure that we locate the sewer line and those things. I know where they're at.
So in other words, if the successful bidder wanted that, there wouldn't be any requirement on them. We'd already have the, to raise the house.
And there's no cost for the permits to city away that they just...
Did they, they got the electricity, did they take the line down?
Yes.
They took the line completely down?
Yes, they took it down to the floor.
To both houses, so.
Yes, they were disconnected, so. Like the next day, it'll...
No further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. The no unfinished business, other business, we have considered law enforcement contract for the City of Enterprise. Brad, you want to?
This is essentially the same contract that Garrett prepared for, that he did for the City of Solomon, with the same annual fee, roughly the same amount of hours. They have programmed the month of February out to the initial, initial start of the contract here in the month of next week, February. And that's essentially it. It can provide the same amount of main hours and the same service structure as what the county provides Solomon, so.
And just kind of in review, I mean, this was kind of a discussion that's been ongoing, and we just kind of waited to see what Enterprise, what their wishes are. And so we're just kind of working with them.
Yeah, up to this point, and, you know, as we all know, Enterprise, I believe, has hired 10 or 11 police chief and chiefs in as many years, and had a very difficult time, you know, being able to secure a law enforcement official or manager there for the police chief that can run the department. And I believe they've just come to the decision that at this point, it's in their best interest to contract with the county, so.
I think Sheldon Jones, I don't know if he could correct that, said he'd had eight chiefs in the last 10 years, plus other officers that have come and gone. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor of any agreement to provide police protection to City of Enterprise, say aye?
Now, do we have the motion?
Oh, I thought I made it.
Did you? I'm sorry, I missed it. And who seconded it?
I guess I didn't get a second.
I will second it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Any more discussion? All of the favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Kind of a technicality there, isn't there?
I still think, I mean, we don't need to do it today, but I still think we need to discuss with Gareth. Last discussion we had with him, we was kind of considering that we were more comfortable with two additional people instead of three at this time. And I think, I think we need to either give that approval to him or so that we understand that.
I talked to Gareth yesterday. Gareth's comfortable with the two. He would like to have a candidate opted in the future if he can come in and present it to you. Would you like to do it, sir? But it might be a year or two down the road. Depends on how things goes. Right now, he would like to do two. He's got one available that he can hire now, and then he would have to advertise for a second, so.
Do we need to formalize that, or do you think from the discussion that we had before? I mean, we seemed in agreement, and I think what, Laverne, what you've mentioned is what we had decided on.
Put it on the record, I can attest to that.
Can we do that now, or do we need to?
Yeah, motion to hire two additional officers for the sheriff's department?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
And move it to second, that we give Sheriff Hoffman the authority to hire two additional deputies. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carried.
And I think it depends on, after a year of it, seeing where the budget lies, you know, whether we feel comfortable in adding to that or not. Plus his workload, you know, knowing what his workload's going to be.
Doug, anything?
No, I have nothing.
Okay. If not, we have motion to adjourn.
I saw move.
Second.
Been moving to second, we adjourn. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. Stand adjourned.